We have the acceptance of the minutes of the September 3, 2019 meeting.
So move.
Second.
Move to second and any discussion. All those in favor? opposed, no one, motion carries unanimously. Public forum, anybody for the public forum this evening? Call to the podium, Phil Althaus, speak about door policy.
Good? Great. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. To the Board of Education, District Administration, and my fellow union brothers and sisters that came out tonight, I appreciate all of you taking the time to listen. I want to preface my speech tonight by stating that there is not a doubt in my mind that anyone in this room takes the safety of our schools lightly. And I also know, we want the safest schools possible. I say that with the deepest sincerity. It is also true that school safety is an issue that has become incredibly more complex over the last decade. As leader of a professional staff and teachers association, it is my duty to see to it that the concerns of staff are not only heard, but they are taken into consideration when formulating policy. The door access policy has ruffled some feathers due to the fact that physically, we are essentially one building and one campus. As a result, as professionals, it can often be in our best interest to have access to the nearest door during emergencies to ensure the safety of our students. If we have to evacuate kids off of a bus for a weather-related emergency, like we had to in May of 2018, instant door access could be beneficial. If there is a threatening presence on our campus, we could be required to enter the nearest door for the safety of our students. If we are walking with students on a return field trip from a local museum or a library, and an issue arises on Maple Avenue, access to the nearest door could benefit our children. We have often been told by administration that you want teachers to have as many tools as possible in our toolbox. We stand here tonight telling you that these are the tools that we need. I do not intend to stand before you tonight and run through hundreds of hypotheticals. It's more important that we also address the drafting of policy. The phrase on the cards we wore today is much bigger than the issue of door access. It really is simple. When professional staff have influence and say in policy discussion, students win. So when a door access policy gets dropped on us via email late August, and it was something that was not even mentioned during last year's School Health and Safety Committee meetings, we have grave concern. A perfect example of successful collaboration was when teachers, SRPs, building administrators, and district administration sat in the conference room across from Guidance in May of 2018 to discuss best practices for an improved elementary school dismissal procedure. Last September, when that plan was rolled out, the first couple of days were definitely a little rough around the edges. But both staff and administrative alike knew we would tighten it up. The reason for management and labor sharing the same sentiment was the fact that that change in procedure was a result of clear communication, collaboration, and a commitment to shared decision-making. All of us in this room this evening have the opportunity to use this discussion as a jumping-off point to improve things for our students. That's why every single person here, as administrators and board members, you should be elated that so many of us stand here in the best interests of children. It's my honor to speak on your behalf, guys. Thank you for all that you do and your support in coming out tonight. I look forward to utilizing this evening as a chance to enhance and revise school policy in the best interests of students and staff. I once again thank you all for listening, and we'd be delighted to entertain any questions that anybody may have.
Thank you, President Althaus. You have another person that's going to speak on this issue?
I know, Tony was giving me her time.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. We certainly appreciate the input that you have brought to us. We appreciate the input that has come from your staff and from your union and from individual employees. We take your concerns very seriously. Please believe that. The Board has full faith in the decision-making ability of its administrative team. And as such, I will turn this over to Superintendent Wiles for further response to you.
So, thank you for all coming this evening. Your voices do mean a lot to us. The district takes the safety and security of the students and the staff in this district very seriously and will continue to make it a priority. In an effort to continually improve the safety and security in our schools, at the beginning of the school year, there was a modification that was made to limit door access, so that the staff could only enter certain doors in the building to which they were assigned. After receiving feedback from the union, faculty, and staff, further review of the administrative team, the initial modification that was made at the beginning of the school year was changed. And it was changed so that staff now had access to every door in the buildings to which they were assigned. So we value the input of faculty and staff and the union, and as such, we'll be referring this concern back to the Safety Committee for further review and recommendations. And it's our hope that we have full representation of law enforcement, so we can go over best practices we've received from other school districts and other buildings in the field that are similar to what we have, and that the discussion will continue at that level. Thank you.
If I could just ask a question or response to that? So you said you'd be referring this back to the Safety Committee?
Mm-hmm.
So we should be expecting correspondence that a meeting will be scheduled?
Yes, there's actually four meetings scheduled. So this will be at the first meeting, the committee, everyone on the committee will get, and you have representatives on the committee.
We absolutely do.
Yep. So we're hoping to have a full committee meeting where we have everybody represented from all the different agencies that sit on the committee, yes.
Okay, and that will be occurring soon? Vince, you usually schedule those?
I think we have a date set, but... And if we see that the attendance is not going to be great, we'll reschedule to make sure that we have the opportunity to have discussion at that meeting.
And the current revised door policy you're saying is going to stand as is until that occurs?
Yes. That'll be discussed at the October 23 meeting.
Just mention again what the current revised...
Right now, the current policy is, right now, is that all the teachers in their assigned buildings, along with teachers that share responsibilities in other buildings, will have access to the buildings that they are assigned to. In addition, the coaches and any club advisors, there'll be modifications made. And if there's, and I believe the correcting email that went out said that if somebody, on a case-by-case basis, needs access to the buildings, they should bring it to their principal's attention or to my attention, and we can make the modification. So we are doing that, we have done that, we'll continue to do that. And if we're going to modify anything, I think we need to have the input of people that are safety professionals and the input of the staff, and we need to make sure that, you know, we're moving forward. So you've asked for discussion, I surely respect that. I think that we've worked really hard over the years to make sure that discussion continues, and I think that's a good venue for it, so that, you know, we can be open to all of the input that comes out at that table.
Point of information, is it my understanding also that teachers will have access to other buildings through the sign-in process?
Yes. So no one's saying, that's a very good point. No one's saying that teachers and staff can't go into other buildings. We're just asking that when you go into other buildings, you sign in, so that in case of an emergency, we know who's in what buildings, so that there's an accounting back to whoever it is that needs to come in and help us, or whatever it is, so that we know. And that process, people are welcome to visit other buildings. We just want everybody to sign in, so we just know who's in the building that's not normally assigned to that building.
Vince, could you restate the date of that Safety Committee meeting?
It's October 23, it's 5:30.
5:30. October 23 at 5:30, and we will have dialogue then and discussion. We look forward to it.
Okay.
Okay? See you then. And thank you, President Althaus. Call to the podium Rebecca Salvage to speak about bathrooms in the pre-K. Rebecca, just have to remind you of our policy is three minutes and no student names or staff names, please.
Hi. Actually, remember some of you from when I was the student representative to the school board. My daughter is now in pre-K, she's four years old. And she was so excited to go to school. So it's a really wonderful, wonderful thing. Until we got to the school. And we did our tour, we did our open house, and it was lovely. And the teachers were so nice, and she's having such a great time. Except for the bathroom. I don't know if any of you have been down there, but the bathroom for the pre-K is an adult-sized bathroom. The toilets are adult-sized toilets. My child, who is four, cannot sit on the bathroom, the toilet, and reach the toilet paper. For a four-year-old, I don't know if any of you have children, this is traumatizing. They are learning how to potty train. They have special needs. Four-year-olds have special needs. And the fact that she cried hysterically on her first day of school, the very first time that she was away from me, that she cried on the first day of school, and then came home and said that she will never use the bathroom while she was in school. I'm sorry.
That's okay, take your time.
And every other parent at Open House had the one same question. Because if you have ever been a parent to a four-year-old, that is their primary life challenge right now, is using the bathroom. Every single parent surrounded the preschool teachers to ask them, "What do we do? How do we do this?" There were parents in the bathrooms trying to instruct their child, "Hey, okay, first you're going to grab your toilet paper. Then you're going to go and try to do this. You're going to hope you don't fall in." You know, those were the types of conversations in both the girls' and the boys' bathroom. And it is my understanding that in the kindergarten classrooms, they have appropriate-sized bathrooms. I have no idea why the pre-K would not have something similar. If anything, it would make sense to move their classrooms to a classroom that was better equipped, or to change out one toilet in each bathroom, so that it was appropriately sized. Kids this age, this is their first exposure to school. Their very first time they are coming into a school. To have them upset about something that it is our duty to correct as adults, to make them feel like this is a welcoming environment for their needs. To say that I'm upset and outraged is actually, it's more than that. I'm kind of like hurt, on behalf of all of the children and the parents, that something so essential to their success would be overlooked in such a dramatic way. So, that is why I'm here. And I hope that you will take what I say into consideration, and at least go and see for yourselves what that situation looks like.
I'm going to have you just stay right there, and I'll have the superintendent address your concerns.
Two things. We're going to go down tomorrow and see what modifications can be done. When we started our pre-K program, we considered moving the pre-K down to the K-1 wing, because every K-1 classroom down in that wing has their own bathroom. But at the time, there was concern about four-year-olds being so far away from the nurse's office and the main office, so there was a decision made to keep them closer to the nurse's office and main office. That being said, in the short term, we will definitely take a look at this tomorrow. In the long term, we're trying to address this as part of a bigger project that we're hoping, you know, to move forward on. So I know that it's on the radar long term, but in the short term, we'll see what we can do. We surely, and I apologize to you, we surely don't want any of our students and our families to feel the way you had to feel this time out. So we will look at it tomorrow, and we'll figure out if there's a different bathroom, or there's something that can be done to those bathrooms, or even the nurse's office. So just give us a day or two, and I'll have the principal get back to you for sure.
I mean, I would say that literally, on behalf of all of the pre-K parents, we appreciate this so much. This is the topic of when we stand outside and we wait for our kids, this is what we all talk about.
I'm glad you came forward, so...
I thank you very much.
We'll be addressing it first thing tomorrow.
Thank you. There are no other persons listed on the public forum, so we will move on to presentations for this evening. Elaine Spina from Whitson's Food Service. She is the Food Service Director. Elaine?
Eileen.
Eileen?
Hello.
Hi.
Hi.
Do you want me to just explain the program, or what are you expecting of me?
Yes.
Okay. 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 Okay, so my name is Eileen Spina. I've been in the food service business for about 13 years. I actually know Wayne, I dealt with Wayne in the past. I've been in a few different school districts, and I just decided it was time for a change. I changed my company, and now I'm here and looking forward to working in Ellenville School District. And so far, the program, the staff is great. And with now being CEP, everyone eating free, we just have some kinks to work out, but so far, so good. And I don't know if anyone has any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Whitson's? Food services? Anything? Are we welcome to come and eat, try your food out?
Of course, anytime. We're in there at 6 o'clock every day.
I'm not coming at 6 o'clock.
Well, you come for breakfast.
Well, that's really, really, really early. Willie?
Hi, Mrs. Spina?
Yes.
Thank you for coming. How long have you been with the district? How long have you been with the district? How long have you been in the district?
In this district, I'm August 1st.
August 1st, okay.
Yes. Bill retired.
Yeah. Whitson's were contracted out. So Whitson's is the company that contracts at our food service. So Eileen is the new, Bill Beetle, if you remember, he retired. So Eileen has replaced Bill as the food service manager for Whitson's.
Oh, okay, you worked for...
Whitson's, yeah.
Whitson's, okay. Well, congratulations.
And I'm new to Whitson's also. I was with a competitor for 13 years, so...
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Want to hear from our food service? Well, we thank you for coming down, and we certainly will be down to try the food. Thank you.
Thank you, it's nice to meet you.
Okay, we'll move on to reports and correspondence. First thing, I'd like to ask, Mr. Burns, how is the Hall of Fame Committee coming?
Good evening, Mr. Matrician. The Hall of Fame is coming along well. We've got the place set up for the breakfast in the morning. The sign and invitations to the breakfast are here, and you'll all be getting one. And the only thing I have to do now is finish up with the plaque lady, who will be pleasantly surprised that we went from a very large number of plaques to a very small number of plaques this year. The only thing I'm waiting on is I haven't spoken with Kermit yet about what we're going to do with that October 19 date. I spoke to Lisa about it. We just didn't get back on it yet, but everything's going along according to Hoyle.
Thank you very much. As far as committees go, since, I haven't discussed this, but going to leave the Policy Committee as is intact. The Pool Committee will stay the same, and...
I just, I think, Wayne, you volunteered for the Wellness Committee last year?
I did.
So I'm not on that committee any longer. Wayne is doing that.
Wayne is doing the Wellness Committee?
Yes. I'm not on that anymore.
So the district committees are the Wellness. So it was Iris, Bill, and Jody Little, but I think this got changed.
Yes, Wayne is doing it now. You're still willing to do it, Wayne?
Yeah.
All right, just to go over that, myself, Jody Little, and Wayne, story will be on the Wellness Committee. Safe, Safety, Health, and Safety Committee will be Vince, myself, and my alternate as far as from a police agency will be Sergeant Morse. And what other...
Mr. President?
Anybody else want to sit on the Safety Committee?
I do.
Is there a listing of the committees?
Right here.
Published?
I will get them to you.
Okay. And what type of committees are there? Is there a distinction between committees?
There are, yeah, there's several committees. There's a Parking Lot Committee, a Pool Committee, a Policy Committee, an Energy Committee, and Audit Committee, which is the full board, Visitation Building Walkthrough, Full Board of Education, Finance Committee, we have to make some changes on that.
Yeah, so there's two types of committees. There are Board Committees, and then there are District-wide Committees. So the Board Committees are made of just the Board. The District-wide Committees are Safety Committees, Wellness Committees, CDEP, PDP, you know, things that are district-based. The Board, we put like two or three Board Members on. Then there are Board Committee, so I might have given you one.
I got the Board Committees right here.
Yeah. And there's some active ones, and there's some, you know, once the committee worked, that the Board appointees done with their work, then they no longer have work to do anymore, so they don't need a committee. So hence the Parking Lot Committee. We changed, there was a group of Board Members that were put together on a committee. We changed the pattern of traffic. We no longer needed that committee. That committee no longer technically exists, because they don't have work to do.
Understood.
As you know, the Policy Committee goes on and on and on and on. So that's work that'll continue. So we have some active committees, some inactive committees, and then we have district committees, like the Safety Committee, which is more than just a Board Committee.
And we'll list all of the committees?
Yes.
We'll get them to you at the next meeting, Will.
And active and inactive.
Thank you.
The ones, yeah, inactive and active. For the Safety Committee, Iris Stream is also volunteered to be on the Safety Committee, so we will have Iris as well. Anybody else want to be on the Safety Committee? If not, we'll move on. Those are listed, and we'll make sure that you have them, all Board Members have them in the next packet, our next Board Docs for that. I know that we've had a mascot committee, and people have been asking about that. We will take that back up in, the work will be taken back up in January, and we will be anxious to see what you have at that time. And thank you for your work. And also thank all the Board Members for all your work on every committee that you serve on, especially the Policy Committee. You guys are really over, do a lot of stuff there at the Policy Committee. And the Hall of Fame Committee. And John, thank you for your work on the Hall of Fame Committee.
Just to let you know, I tried to remember to put in a little bit of information in our packets, and I haven't been successful yet about the Policy Committee, but just to give you a heads-up, the next meeting, we'll be discussing the social media policy, which is a bit of a slog, but we're working on it. So you can expect something in the next, over the next few meetings about that.
Okay, thank you. Move on to Board Membership. Anybody have anything? Board Membership? Geneva?
Just as an announcement, I guess, and a thank you. I believe there were no objections or anything for the Ulster Rosies representatives, so I think the appointment is the 25th, September 25.
Good.
Thank you.
Hopefully you will enjoy, and thank you for serving. Student Representatives are to be announced. We will have them, you have them?
Yeah, in my notes when I speak up.
All right. Next, Superintendent Lisa Wiles.
So just a couple of things. The student reps to the Board hopefully will be at the first October meeting. The co-pres, there's co-presidents this year. It's Adam Perry and Marlon Cabrera Arujo. The Vice Presidents, Kira Thompson. The Treasurers, Isabella Donahue. And the Secretary is Michelle Wang. So we're hoping that we'll have someone seated here at every meeting. There's a mandated orientation that we do with the Student Council, Advisors, and the reps, who would come to the Board and just go over our procedures. We have a, it's a short period of time from tonight till next Tuesday, so we're going to, they'll be at the first October meeting. And the last thing I had tonight is that at the next Board Meeting, we'll have a resolution based on the work that the Board's done, revising the Capitol Project referendum. So just some information for the public and the Board. So last December, as we all recall, we had a referendum that was defeated. We did a survey at the end of the vote, or during the vote, for community members to give us their input. It was very, very helpful. We took all the input that we received from the public that shared it with us, and the Board did an excellent job putting a new project together with a revised scope. The revised scope is a third less than what was included. It's shaved off about $10 million. The total scope of the project will be approximately $19,950,000. And really, the way I view it, it's really nuts and bolts. We're talking about HVAC roofing, you know, what we call building envelope systems, along with, balanced with some expansion of the elementary school program with the cafeteria and the library. We limited the site work that we're going to do, because that was the, those were the areas that were not aidable. So we tried to maximize the state aid. And we are definitely going to be getting more information out between now and December 3rd, various different mediums, including the website, Facebook. Put some new videos up, new pictures up, and we'll be at all the community events. And it was suggested, and we are definitely going to be implementing a few building walkthroughs for the public, so that they can come into the building and walk through the building and look at the systems, and, you know, look at what of the, what areas we need to repair. And we're trying to do some creative ways to show people, without bringing them on the roof, what needs to happen. So we really want to get the information out. But this is a nuts and bolts type of referendum, doing those things that are really going to sustain this building and the life of the building. So that vote will be December 3rd, and more information will follow along with the resolutions.
Thank you. Assistant Superintendent for Business, Mr. Napoli.
I have nothing to report tonight, thank you.
Deputy Superintendent, Ms. Angela Arbeno-Madina.
Just very quickly, we have training coming up next week for mentor-mentee pairs for the 1920 school year. And I also included in my report an acknowledgement of some work that was completed by some of our teachers. You'll be able to check it out on the link that I provided on our website in the dropdown for staff. Really solid stuff, and done in their free time, and to support the instructional community. So that's it, thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to personnel resolutions for this evening. Under 6.1, uncertified substitute teacher upon recommendation, Superintendent of Schools, be resolved that Abigail Craft be appointed uncertified substitute teacher at a rate of $95 per day work for the 2019 school year. Move to seconded discussion. Move to second at discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. 6.2, home tutor upon a recommendation superintendent of schools be resolved that Mark Disarmi be appointed for home tutoring for the 19-20 school year at a contractual rate of $55 per hour work.
Second.
Move to second at discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. 6.3, co-curricular personnel upon a recommendation superintendent of schools be resolved that the co-curricular personnel as set forth below be approved at contractual rate listed for the 19-20 school year. Mark Disarmi and Michael Dorian.
Move the list that's presented.
List has been moved and seconded discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. 6.4, resignation upon a recommendation superintendent of schools be resolved that the resignation of Olivia Jamelli, high school, middle school drama production advisor and middle school musical director be accepted effective immediately with regret.
So, second.
Move to second at discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Winter coach upon a recommendation superintendent of schools be resolved that Gregory Avery be appointed as modified wrestling coach for the winter at a yearly stipend of $2,462 pro-rated for the 19-20 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Move to second at discussion.
We have a report on what our numbers are like for that program. Last year, we... Mr. Moyer told us they were on the rise. I know it's not the season yet. I'm just wondering if we...
We'll get your report.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. 6.6, upon a recommendation superintendent of schools be resolved that Glenn Danahan be approved as a one-to-one aide to attend before-school activities with student number 25712 as needed at a rate of 1950 per hour work for 19-20 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Move to second at discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Policy. 7.1, resolve that this be considered the second and final reading of Policy 5660, Meal Charge and Prohibition Against Meal Shaming.
So moved.
Move to second at discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Under 8.1, education resolutions be resolved, the attached list of student IEPs be acknowledged as appropriate. There are 12.
So moved.
Move the list that's presented. Second. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. 8.2, resolve the following volunteers be approved for the 19-20 school year.
Move the list that's presented.
Moved and seconded discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. Under other...
Mr. President, move 9.1 through 9.5. Second.
9.1 through 9.5 has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. The next meeting will be next Tuesday, September 24. Anybody have anything they want to see on that agenda? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Move to seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. We're adjourned.